Okay, well, it's seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Is there any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, some wish to move agendas presented. Lyle, any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. It is Carrie DeNansley. Okay, moving on to the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll start with them.
Okay, Georgia Day moves the minutes of September fourteenth. Any discussion on Georgia Day's motion? Hearing done, I'll call the question. It is Carrie DeNansley. Okay, now, moving on to delegations. So we have our MLA for our area of Carstensicka. Here, Senator Joseph, the floor is yours.
Sure, where should I sit?
You can stay right there if you like.
For the purposes of, uh, of the social distancing and that, if you want to stand up right here, I can put the camera here and then, Jersey Lee, and that way everybody can stand their six feet and you can address everybody and...
Sure.
Perfect.
We'll just chair it for a little bit. Everyone's sitting down, maybe I'll sit down as well.
Sure.
I'm sure it'll be hot. Would it be a council meeting if it wasn't, I guess?
Oh, man.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. Thank you, honorable council members, for having me. I will begin by telling you how honored I am to be here with you tonight. And I appreciate your patience as I have baked my way from town council meeting to town council meeting, uh, and now I'm here with you. Uh, it's been a long, I guess you could say, year and a half, as I sit during the week usually in the legislature, which makes Monday nights very difficult for me to be anywhere, Tuesdays, and that tends to be what town council meetings are. Excuses aside, thank you for the invitation. It's not for not wanting to be here, it's just getting here. Uh, I bring to you the greetings of the legislature and the premier, and grateful for all the work you do. And I often say this, I'm very envious of town councils, because you are at the ground level with your constituents. I have forty thousand plus bosses and you have, as I understand it, around eighteen, nineteen hundred. Oh, you're two thousand, okay. Numbers, numbers have gone up when I did the election, I was doing ten, you know, town council, two thousand, excellent. So you have two thousand, you really get to integrate yourself even more in the communities, though I suspect it takes you a little longer to get to and from the grocery stores, I'm sure you get hounded a little more when you're, uh, when you're over there. All that to say that it is a, it's a, you know, certainly a unique time, and I'm hoping to more answer questions and give reports. Uh, I know, I suspect one item that you're gonna wanna chat about, that I have some information on, but otherwise, have at it, let's, let's chat. I, and I guess I'll preface this, I often, you can tell by my stature, I play a little bit of sports. I listen to what people say and how they say it. So as long as we keep one foot on the ground, I think everything's, uh, everything's fair game.
Well, I guess we might as well start it off with the infrastructure one that we applied for. Um, I'm sure you probably got the letter that Kim and the staff kindly coordinated or drafted. It was a little nicer than what I had originally wanted to draft. Um, 'cause I was very disappointed that, you know, we put off our project for a full year before we even contemplated sending it out for tender. And then we even put it off even longer than that, you know, to, so that we could see if we could qualify. And then with discussion with the department, um, you know, we decided that we could phase it, 'cause then it would qualify. And it wasn't by the, the tone of the letter that the minister wrote and the tone of the letter of the federal minister. Um, they're, they're a little different, um, one kind of semi-blame the other. Um, and I appreciate that. It's not a total blame game that we live in, but it was very disappointing, you know, to say the least, that, to, to anticipate you're gonna have a five million dollar project that should be theoretically shovel-ready before you send it out for tender and, and you have to try and hold off yet for the government money. And it looked like the delay was in the department. And I appreciate some of that delay would've been before you were MLA, uh, but yet, on the other hand, the buck stops, I guess, at your doorstep, and same as it stops at our doorstep. But it is really disappointing that our community has to borrow over two million dollars to finish a project that, you know, the federal government, you know, originally, we anticipated getting something from them on it.
Yeah. Mayor, I think you made some great points, absolutely. I am frustrated with the process. I see the process as overly bureaucratic, arbitrary, and it's a frustrating one to navigate, especially when you're here at this council meeting, just trying to direct by your constituents. And the federal government, and I guess to an extent the provincial government are trying to navigate, provincial government's trying to navigate the federal bureaucratic waters, if you will. Um, I made some phone calls directly and sat down directly with the administration on this ICIP. So here's the short and sweet of it. And, uh, is that I will play the blame game, and that you applied for a grant that, as I understand, was a pretty good-looking grant, and you did break ground before the grant was accepted. Now, that is the reason that the grant was unaccepted. The administrative construction is office pleaded with the federal government, Minister McKenna, to make an exception for your grant, given the circumstances. Uh, they took about three months to get back to them, and then ultimately said no. So that hog ties our hands, because the federal government distributes the money, but we recommend the projects because of the, but it's outlines, or rather, a parameter set by the federal government. So, you know, basically, we say we recommend this one, but not this one, and I thought this was a great project. You know, I, I love pools. Laker Health from college, high school, you know, it's a great summer job. And I go to public pool all the time in Carstens in summertime when we can. So you don't get some in the merits of the pool. Um, but I also recognize that we advocated for it, we asked for an exception, and the federal government said no. So when time came to actually make recommendations for the project, we couldn't, because it was outside the parameters of, I guess, being accepted by the fans. So you have every right to be upset. I'm upset. Um, it's taken me a little while to get some clear, uh, some concrete answers on this, but I've had recent conversations, as recent as today, on this, and this is the short and sweet of it, and I'm disappointed, frankly.
Uh, you know, so are we. You know, I think every small municipality probably feels the same way. Um, you know, that, uh, there are lots of projects that, you know, I mean, we, we held off, you know, over a million dollars of the project. Um, not even awarding it, but, so, I mean, I guess, you know, it'd be like me saying, well, you know, we're gonna award a contract to upgrade a highway, but we're not gonna put the bridge in until after we find out whether there's money for the bridge. So now, all of a sudden, you're gonna get to a point where you have to say, well, we gotta pretty well put the bridge in, otherwise the highway's kind of useless. And I think that's what we looked at, is that, you know, the full year prior to, you know, that we applied for it, you know, so two thousand and nineteen, we applied for the money, eighteen, we applied for the money, and, you know, not find out until, you know, theoretically, when we had no choice. If we wouldn't have gone in the ground when we did, I mean, we're even pushing right now the window to see whether we can get finished, you know, in time before the snow flies. And, um, we're lucky, we, you know, able to get a couple of great contractors that, uh, or, you know, one contractor worked seven days a week. You know, eight to twelve-hour days, their, their crew, to try and make the project get into the time window that we had. So, you know, I appreciate it, it has nothing to do with, with, uh, but, uh, you know, when, when our government that's in place today pushes that, you know, we need to eliminate some red tape, you know, here's one area where we could eliminate, you know, not just a roll of red tape, but probably a mile of red tape, and, and just try to say to the federal government, but, you know, um, and I, I do appreciate, you know, you guys make the recommendations, but, um, it just, it just felt like all the way around, so I guess I won't, um, deliver, go over it much more, but...
I think, I think you're bang on. I mean, I, I think you make some extra points, you know, especially with the red tape part. I mean, this is a process that is overly cumbersome, overly bureaucratic, far too much red tape, and, you know, they're basically saying, here's a whole bucket of money, you tell us where we should spend it. We say, hey, spend them over here, and they say, uh, oh, you know, they meet all the parameters, but, um, you know, there's, there's this one little hiccup. So, you know, now you can't have this money. I mean, put it in very simple terms. And again, you're talking to a guy who is not happy with how this has played out, because it ultimately comes down to, it's a good project. Right? It's a good project. Does Catherine McKenna think it's a good project? She doesn't know your project from the hole in the wall, but I do. And the minister does, 'cause I've sold them on the project. But ultimately Catherine McKenna makes that decision, and she's the one that sets the parameters. So if there is anyone to go and say, we gotta cut some red tape, I'll tell you, if the federal liberals could use a red tape reduction ministry themselves, 'cause this is one. But I, I am sorry. I am sorry that this has happened. This is very frustrating, and you're talking to a guy who definitely understands where you're coming from.
Uh, and if we could pass on administratively, just the frustration with the process itself. Um, starting in two thousand and eighteen, being, working with, uh, the Alberta Ministry, saying that this is a great project, helping us through the application process. We, we spent hundreds of man-hours on this thing, because they were supposed to be shovel-ready projects. We had the pool ready to go, other than timelines and actually tendering the project. Uh, one of the things that I really, and of course, reading both letters from both ministers, really understand the process and where, you know, where the hang-up is, this is the, this is the letter from Minister McKenna here. Uh, understand the explanation completely, but making sure that we get back to letting them know the major issue was in this was the procedure itself. Uh, we had an expression of interest that had timelines that for start a project, uh, in, uh, mid-two thousand and nineteen, that with help from the province, we amended that all the way along to stay eligible. So we, at the end, ended up with like three applications for this, trying to remain. And, and that, and that's a big thing, is, again, you know, aside from council having to make that decision whether a project goes forward one year or another. Um, there was also the administrative side, where there was hundreds of man-hours put together and putting proposals together, making sure that we had all the numbers straight, making sure that this council knew where their money was going. Um, they made a conscious decision to cover the costs of that, so moving forward, there was borrowing, but the end effect of this by not, uh, by not getting the, the grant funding, is that we just ended up borrowing the sunbacks of the taxpayers of the, the two thousand people that are, that are in our community. From that, just how we can do that in the future, because, again, shovel-ready projects, we just ran into the exact same thing with stimulus funding. We, we got asked for shovel-ready projects to, and, you know, we submitted those to your office as well. And then when they turned around and gave the money away, it was anything that had already had any money allotted for it, it doesn't qualify. That's very frustrating, because if it's shovel-ready, it's already got money allotted to it. And so, yeah, those processes are making a lot of the stuff that we're doing very difficult for, for us to give good recommendations to council on what to move forward with and what not to.
You have constituents that you're responsible to, and you have bent over backwards to try to, you know, make this process work with the ICIP grant. I get it. And, and again, I, I'm sorry that, that, that this has happened, and you have my full support to, you know, advocate on behalf of this project again in the future or other projects, but also to advocate for, you know, such a reduction of red tape and not...
Better on your channel.
You know, you better intend the process and, you know, this did come, this started before I was even in the picture. But with that said, I, I've always tried to work with councils, county councils, town councils, when you have projects in mind, so that I count and have each of the pitfalls of bureaucracy, 'cause, my goodness. You know, it's, it, it's a pain. So, I, you know, I'm, I'm the best friend you can have in government, 'cause I, I really believe in local projects and helping out. And I just hope that moving forward, that it's something that I can be, I can help you with. I, I'm here. I, I am honestly here for you.
One of the issues with shovel-ready projects, and I'll compare Vulcan to Calgary. Calgary's got an engineering department. Something comes up, they dust off the plans, bring it up to date. We don't have engineers, we have to go out and hire them.
Absolutely.
For everything. So we don't have shovel-ready projects, per se. They do.
Yeah, it's a bit of a chicken and the egg type thing, Councilor, yeah. So it's a very, it's a valid point, you know, when you're talking about projects, large projects, I mean, you know, it's one thing as a business to incur costs with a long-term projection or return investment, but as a town, when you're looking at grant money and what you could potentially get, you know, you are, you are investing in many things like research, uh, engineering costs, um, you know, surveying, the list goes on. All for the prospect of being awarded money. So, you know, yeah, I, I hear you. Excellent, you know, really good points.
You guys got some questions from Joseph?
I guess my concern would be is, we know we went through the process, and yet, nothing changed. I mean, we still owe that money. So what happens? I mean, this is probably the last big project we can do for a while, because we really burdened our taxpayers. So how can we make this better in the future?
I feel, political answers won't answer it. I'm sure I'll look you up with a political answer, but...
No, I fear not.
The political answer, and I apologize, Councilor, I'm trying, I don't mean to make way to your question. Um, it is a very serious question. The, the best answer is, is work with, work with me on this. You know, I, I know you had MLA Schneider before me, uh, who, uh, you know, I suspect worked with you on this. And I'm here, I'm here as well. You know, I've, I don't have a problem driving out whenever I'm not in session to Vulcan for day to visit with you and talk about some of your wish list projects. Primarily because as a member of the government caucus, but not a minister, but as deputy whip of caucus, uh, I can go into any minister's office and say, what's the deal with this? I can call the chief of staff, you know, and, you know, within reasonable hours, of course, and get some clarification on something. Because if you're about to make a large investment on something, like, or throw some money towards a project, you probably wanna know what the probability is or what the steps are, so, you know, we don't mess it up. Like, I don't imagine that anyone sitting at this table is a master of navigating the bureaucratic waters of government. In fact, I suspect you have really great lives outside of this that don't fall bureaucracy. And that's where I commend out. I don't navigate the waters great myself, but I'm fully do. So moving forward, the answer to your question is work with them in projects. And if there's red tape that you run into in this situation, the provincial, that I can help cut, oh, I'm all over it. I mean, I'll...
Well, I have, this is my own personal opinion, not anything else.
Certainly.
I truly feel there must be, because I feel like we have done everything we can to make sure that we follow the guidelines and made it possible to, to make us eligible for the, uh, the grant. And, you know, whether it's the provincial government, the federal government, doesn't really matter, we don't have the money.
You're right, you don't. And, and again, navigating this through a federal system that is determined by a provincial government is a bit frustrating, because we advocate, we went to Minister McKenna, we said like, can you make an exception for this project? We understand that, that the timelines don't add up to, I guess, meet the requirements of the ICIP grant, but the spirit of the project is there, right? And that's where I do feel a little frustrated as a private citizen with, you know, the letter of the law and the letter of the, of the regulation versus the spirit of the regulation. And you're looking at something that really comes down to one simple question. Is it a good project? Is it a good project? And if council has voted on this project as being a good project, and then, and, you know, and it meets the requirements, the spirit of it, then I would hope that that would be understood, but apparently, that's not the case. So we did advocate on behalf of this project, uh, looking for some kind of exception, and I clarified this point with the minister's office. And the short answer was, they dragged their heels to get us an answer. When they did, it was, it was enough. And that was frustrating for me, 'cause I was hoping there might be some agency here and saying, well, look, like, they've been going through the steps for, for years now, holding off just to meet your requirements, only to be told down the road, no, because you broke ground probably months before the grant was awarded. I mean, for heaven's sakes. So, you know, when I, when I saw the opportunity for this grant, you know, when I knew about it, I was like, yes, this is a good project. This is a great project for Vulcan. Um, 'cause MLAs are, you know, oftentimes, you know, asked for input. All I can say is I, I am and have been your advocate on behalf of this project, and, and will be on future ones, and I think it just sucks. It sucks the way this thing went down, and I'm just hoping that I can help in, help in the future, so this doesn't happen again. But if there's specific things that you run into, I'm happy to work with Mr. Fath on this, but if specific things have happened that you think in the future could be moved from a provincial side, I, I, I will take your right to administer control and say, this is kind of your role.
We'll move on to another one that's probably gonna be a hot topic, subject over a period of time, I guess, is, have you heard any more on, we went down to your literary line.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the assessment review, have, has she come up with much more on that at all, or is it, is it still? I mean, I, I appreciate, you know, and I feel sorry for her in a way. I mean, I feel sorry for Casey, 'cause I, I'm sure that it didn't come from him. I, I think that sometimes I pick up bureaucracy more than I probably should, but, um...
We need them.
Well, we, we need them, and, and they're, they're important, but sometimes, I mean, they come up with some ideas and try to move projects or, or stall projects, um, depending on where they see it in the queue. But, you know, I think this one here was, you know, started long before, uh, our previous minister of infrastruc-, or municipal affairs was there. And I think that, you know, unfortunately, um, you know, she inherited it, and I appreciate that she has, you know, more or less tried to put a, a bit of a stop or a hold on it, but have you heard any more on that than at all, so?
Nothing concrete. I mean, I, I can, I can echo what was said from you, and that is, um, I shouldn't, let me backtrack. Don't feel bad for them.
Don't feel bad for who?
Don't feel bad for them. Look, these, these are ministers who have a very tough job, and I, and of course, I kid a little bit, but, you know, they, they know what they're getting into, and they have to make tough decisions. I mean, I don't envy their position they're in, but I also recognize that, you know, that there's a lot of, you know, a lot of responsibility that rests on their shoulders. Um, so I don't feel bad so much as I, as I, as I try to sympathize as much as I can with them. Uh, but I will say that Minister Alard did something miraculous in that seventy, that could be scored in this Minister Municipal Affairs, she came right down and, you know, faced the music, was very, uh, was very rightfully upset on municipalities. And the short answer is, they have stopped the, you know, the, the, they have stopped what was in motion before. They are going to come up with answers so that municipalities can come up with budgets for this year for the fall and work through it to get it right, not just get it done. Uh, it sounds to me that the minister's taking a far more consultative approach to this, and that makes me happy, because I think the best answer, as the minister said, is one where she comes to where no one's happy. Right? The reality is, we have, and I've met with council, Mrs. Loh, county council, uh, and Reeve Schneider on this as well, and they are not happy. You know, they're naturally, they're unhappy that they might lose a, a significant portion of their tax base. The concern we have is, one, this is supposed to be done every three to five years, and it has been done for a while. So it's gotta be done. This is a linear assessment. But two is, we have a lot of oil and gas companies that are really struggling. So at the current trajectory or current tax rate, they're just gonna be out of business, so there won't be any tax pool there. Right? So you can, you know, you can't get water for a blood from the stone, wherever the phrase goes. So if we can make something better for them, so they continue to pay some kind of a tax base, whether it's storm, but I'm also not convinced that these changes are gonna save everybody. So, you know, what, what is the answer? And it is a very complex issue, one that I continue to, to learn about every time I talk about it. So to answer your question, which is probably a non-answer, is there isn't a lot of significant updates, save it for, the minister is working on it. We are working with her, and she plans on taking, you know, approach for the long-term solution that includes a lot more consultation with the ground level municipalities.
Okay. MSI?
What's it now?
Well, it's supposed to end soon. Um, you know, so, you know, is, I appreciate, you know, it was a Stelnac philosophy, so I assume that the present group are gonna put a different title on, same as the previous one, wanted to change the title to, but, um, have you heard any more rumblings of how that's going to?
I, I have not. There's nothing that I can report on that, save it for, just generally speaking with government, 'cause always you'd be less, you know, given the budgets, there'd probably be less money going around. Send this at our meeting, you know, like...
Our calculation with the new fiscal framework, the, the way they laid it out, is about a thirty percent reduction.
Yeah. So, again, I, I wouldn't even begin to bade into those, into that territory as to what it's gonna look like. So, and I would be, I'd be remiss if I didn't give you any, from that, besides what I said, there was like, across the board with government, there would be less money going around.
I'm sure, yeah. We, I think most of us understand that to a degree, but, um, and, um, I guess, have, you know, have they done much more on policing other than the way it is, or have you heard much on that?
Uh, actually, was it the coal, coalers' council meeting, well, you brought some interesting points. Um, but I'm not a guy who has an answer for everything. I don't pretend like I do, so I have an answer for anybody looking at you. 'Cause you brought the same question.
Yeah, 'cause I know that there was a lot that they're pushing, you know, like, you know, a lot of municipalities do have, you know, their constables and their peace officer program, and, you know, is that something that's gonna, you know, they're, they could have to disappear because they're gonna bounce fudgees. I, I do appreciate, you know, we, we've been very fortunate, you know, our population base. I mean, you take a look at, you know, coal rails and those ones that, you know, you know, uh, 'cause they're over the five thousand, you know, whether you go four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, and all of a sudden, you're five thousand and one, now you're...
They're wasted going that dirt.
Yeah, yeah, you really get penalized. But, you know, it, it is kind of, so, you know, uh, you know, we heard that Turnavelli and Black Diamond are talking about ameliorating so that they can benefit from the, the numbers and on the law, so...
Well, I think policing, just from, uh, just from, you know, what you hear in the news, uh, which is a full-on review, right? I mean, you know, you know, part of the Fair Deal panel was having a conversation about a provincial police force, which I've heard has been wildly popular. Um, now, I think the RCMP does a tremendous job at the ground level. A lot of them are friends of mine, one of my college roommates is in Charlie, we believe in the county. Uh, he's a police officer in, in up in northern Saskatchewan. Um, but, uh, you know, so a lot of respect for RCMP does. I think there's concern more about the top brass, and, and so it's kind of more the, what comes up from Ottawa. So when it comes to policing, I think there's a lot of unanswered questions, and if it hasn't been specific, I'd have your report back to you.
Yeah, I know. It was just curious, you know?
Uh, from the policing standpoint, when we reviewed the numbers that we got specifically for us, there hasn't been a conversation about, I know lots of people are asking questions, but there hasn't been anything come back, uh, positive or negative from the province about, uh, compensation for the communities that are already employing peace officers. Uh, and there is compensation for people that, uh, communities that are already part of the enhanced leasing program, but not community peace officers. And if you look at our municipality specifically, uh, by the time we get to year four, when we're paying our full cost, it's exactly the same as what our budget is to employ a peace officer.
So you don't keep questions, yeah?
We do, yeah. And so by the time our budget for the peace officer and his equipment and vehicle work out just about what we're gonna be paying to the provincial land. So basically, it doubles our budget from a hundred, uh, a hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand. And that's a concern long-term, if, and that's why we'd like to see some kind of consideration for credit or on that, because council made that choice in two thousand and twelve to put that, uh, that peace officer program in place to compensate for what the RCMP, uh, didn't have time to do within our community, traffic control, those sort of things.
And they're very effective, but that a person has one as well, and you just gotta do what, uh, it was a game, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so, yeah, a couple of times when we got mayor's reviews, you know, your, your mayor, she voiced her, you know, concerns about that area, of course, and...
Well, they're, they're upset because they're not giving credit for the enhancement, right? And, and, and I think that makes some valid points there. Um, so I, you know, I'm still working with Jeff Shaw, the C A O down there, and kind of having that conversation.
I mean, you know, again, too, you know, we, we do appreciate that, that, you know, the philosophy behind it, and, you know, whether we've ridden the pine, you know, for years of not, you know, having to pay much for, for policing, but a lot of municipalities try to enhance that. We did, we did look at the enhanced, you know, policing program. Unfortunately, when the RCMP do not like doing... Unfortunately, when the RCMP do not like doing bylaw. So, I mean, you know, when you kind of have to kind of complement both in the, some, do some sort of both together. It's pretty hard to expect that they're gonna do your, some of your bylaws, especially cats and dogs. And we haven't.
Trees growing up, properties, chickens, sidewalk.
We're lucky so far, we don't have the chickens issue yet, but it's.
It's coming, it's coming. For hogs, you know.
Well, yeah, there is one in town, I know for sure. But anyway, I have my files on my phone, but it's a bit, yeah, bark's like a dog, too. Believe it or not. But anyway, yeah, is there any, kind of dominating the questions here for Barbara?
The Rita's, have you heard anything? Was suggested at the session on Paradi, I guess, that three different people asked, and there was never a yes or a no answer. Will the Rita's be left the way they are? Or will there be full funding for them now that the government has expressed interest in diversity? And, you know, more economic development?
I'm gonna go back to my other answer, I don't have, that I don't have an answer for everything. And that would be one of those, that came up at our Coal, at my Coalers Council meeting. And I'm working to get some information about the future Rita's and funding along for them. Because they need to do some really tremendous work and, you know, what they do, and especially to talk about diversification. You know, it's so important for this government, Rita's are integral to that. So I would, I would hate to give you information that's just speculative at best. So I will report back to you on that.
Well, report back positive.
I will report back.
Report back positive.
Take a positive attitude regardless of what happens.
It's taking a long beginning because all the political alliances.
Oh, yes, is there any news on the amalgamations for senior housing? For the lodges and, say, different areas?
Sorry, I'm not familiar with that. I'm gonna phone out because now I'm starting taking more very specific notes. I have the worst handwriting that you can ever imagine. And as such, I don't, I don't write. So I'm just gonna make a couple of notes here.
For some of us that have gone through amalgamation, different groups over the years. You know, we really understand the philosophy of amalgamation. But some of us, at least me, have never seen the benefits of the amalgamations. And I can go on to Alberta Health is probably a big one, the hospitals. I can go to the next one, which is EMS. You know, I have never seen personally, I mean, people can say the numbers are there, but I personally have never been able to been convinced that. And so I, when Alberta, when they're talking about amalgamations of.
Of the boards, yes.
I really question it, like if, you know, as an example, if they said, well, Carstens, Raymond, McGrath, and, you know, Lefbridge are gonna have to become one board for all of those, you know, three municipalities. I would say those three municipalities would be a little upset.
Sure, yeah.
I think that, you know, we've seen a lot of the boards have taken on some larger roles already by taking an outpick on, you know, ours as an example, where they've taken on the senior housing in Lowndes and Carmengay and Champion have all fallen under the board of the Vulcan, treated off the lodge, you know, a few, quite a few years ago, but it, they were independent before. And I can see the advantage of that. You know, you go over into the Nantin area and, you know, I'm sure that's happened, I know that's happened over there. Nantin's has taken on Staveys. I don't know about the Carstens and the area around there, but I assume it probably did if there was one in, you know, a couple of smaller communities around it. But, but sometimes, you know, just because you've come bigger, isn't always better. Matter of fact, in my opinion, and I would have had this poor philosophy of it years ago in the AIDS, when I was on the hospital board, I thought that bigger was better. But then I got slapped by Barry McFarland and told that it wasn't, and it proved right. And sometimes, you know, amalgamating those boards might save you a couple of nickels, but you'll lose dollars no longer, in my opinion.
No, I can appreciate those mistakes.
You know, and so any other questions or?
Just have a quick, but just so I don't have to bug you on the phone. One thing that adds back to the ISF funding, and it was just the suggestion of using federal gas tax. Because we've been looking for alternative grants that we can apply for, obviously, to apply to the project. And I don't think that there's a clear understanding of the, the impact of the grant dollars available. Our federal gas tax is a hundred thousand dollar a year. So to, for the one point six that we asked for through the ISF, it would take us sixteen years of applications for that. The other one was MSI, and we committed one point three million of our MSI to that. And we only bring in just under four hundred thousand in MSI capital. So it took three and a half years for us to put that money together to apply to that project. So the one point six saying apply for, you know, you can do it under these grant, we've already exhausted those. And like I said, federal gas tax for sixteen years is not feasible for us. You know, we can only apply a couple of years in advance. So it just, I wanted to know if you know, when you are exploring this further, if you can suggest any other grants that we may have missed on this as well? Because we've been, we've been beating all the bushes trying to, to find any available grant funding for the.
And you're of two point one?
The two, two point five is what we borrowed. So with the one point six, the, what council was gonna have to borrow was nine hundred thousand for the project. Without it, we were gonna have to borrow two point five. So just throwing that out there and then just so that, because like I said, for our council that's gonna review this letter next, can we use the federal gas tax? Well, yeah, it's a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yes.
Last year, we did get two hundred, but that's because the federal government doubled it.
Sure.
So it's not.
Yeah.
Sounds great, but we applied that to our street program this year.
Yeah, I, I see the problem right here. Let me have a look.
Yeah, if you know of any grant streams that we aren't aware of, but we spend a lot of time beating the bushes for these, and there does not seem to be anything else that we're eligible for.
Yeah, I'm happy to have a look at that. Again, I can't make any promises of what I've got, but I know some people who might, know some people who might know some stuff, so.
Appreciate that, that is just gonna be a phone call to you.
Very, very happy to do that.
Any questions from anyone else? Okay, before I let you go, I've got, I sit on Seawat, just don't over waste energy.
Yes.
So I've got a little bit of information for you.
Okay.
Of course, we've been, of course, going after money too, but. I guess my disappointment, but yet I would appreciate if someday, day we can have sit down, you know, visit. But, you know, we've got a document here that says that, you know, in our proposal, if we build one of these facilities in southern Alberta, you know, we can save seven hundred million tons of greenhouse gases. And not one department really has taken that over and said, hey, you know, here's an opportunity to tell Justin. You know, we don't, we can do things on our own, we don't need a carbon tax in our communities. And, you know, we've got a group of people that are willing to do it. And I'm not a person that threatens anybody and I'm not a person that, you know, but sooner or later, we're gonna have to go after the feds for, you know, our project if the province doesn't wanna put their hat, take the hat on top of it. Got some great support from a lot of MLAs and, you know, like Grant Hunter and, and, you know, the MLA and Lefbridge and Dorf and a couple of other ones. And, you know, we, we met with the caucus, Southern Alberta Caucus. You weren't at that meeting that day that we met with them?
I met with, I met with you guys a lot, that kindness.
Yeah, but anyway.
I think it's a great project, I like it. And I actually went home and watched a little videos about this, just on YouTube, just my curiosity piqued on it. As a former garbage man myself, I used to collect garbage, both the bin truck with the joystick and all the, I mean, and it really was fascinating stuff. So I looked and I think it's a great project. Yeah, so I can have some conversations, so I'll chat with some of my colleagues.
Yeah, and so, you know, yeah, just if you can, I mean, we're not, I'm not trying to throw you under, under the bus or anything with any of it, but I've got some information that we, we went to the minister for, or I haven't gone to the Minister Switzer, if I pronounce his name right, for Minister of Jobs, Economics and Innovation, but we were sent in a letter. We met with a couple of his department people. And there's another example where a couple of the department people said, you don't qualify for our project. And we said, yes, we do. And the person said, no, distinctly said, no, you don't. And then when we sent him a copy of what qualifies, he still has questions whether we qualify. So, I mean, three of his colleagues said yes, and he said no. And yet his astounding no was greater than the other three colleagues. And yet when he proved them that he's wrong, he still hasn't had the ability to admit that, hey, maybe I need to look at that program once more and, so.
Well, I'm happy to take it to him, happy, happy to take it to him and his chief of staff, a good friend of mine, somebody, somebody else in the ministry. But, you know, you know, it's not something that I hesitate for a moment to chat with him about and find exactly why you're not getting the response you're looking for. Again, I can't make any promises and answers, but.
I'm not asking.
But, no, no, and I know you're not, but I will say that I was at the meeting here in Vulcan County Council office. This must have been almost, definitely pre-COVID. Which apparently is kind of now like a time benchmark. It's all pre-COVID, but yeah, really liked, I was an interesting project, so send it my way and I'll be happy to visit with you.
Got some here for you.
Love it.
Is there anything else for just, anyway, we appreciate you taking the time with me on my note. I've got a bit of a drunk to get home, but. There's the Seawat stuff and here's the ears and the pin and a pen.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. I'll give you one of those. Now, before I go, I will say I have been to mayor's reviews as often as I can. And I really appreciate your mayor grant for all the time he puts into those meetings and the input he gives. I, the town of Vulcan is very lucky to have him. And I spend time on the phone with Kim as well, your CAO, and a very intelligent individual who I'm gonna be relying upon a lot in the future for information to keep advocating for the community of Vulcan, I love this place.
Well, we appreciate you taking the time, definitely come on the CSR.
Well, first time, it won't be my last, that's a promise.
Okay.
All right, I'll give you one thing, thank you so much.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you like, but I appreciate that, I'm sure you.
I know I won't get home to you, my kids did that, but my wife, oh, you know, of course she is for that, so.
Watch your head. Okay, thanks. Yeah. Okay, moving back on to our agenda. Five one, the letter from the Infrastructure Minister. So hopefully everybody's had a read at those two. Those are the two that we've been going back and forth with Joseph on.
As you tell by the questions, really just trying to answer that, where did the process fall apart that bad? They basically come back and said it's timeline. Didn't qualify based on us moving forward with the project. We did, in the letter of response, mention that any project that can sit and wait is not really a priority if it can sit and wait for extended years to be approved. But this was the answer that we received.
But if we would have waited on the proper timeline, then would have we lost another season in the pool?
We, absolutely.
This one and next, twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, well, either that or else we would have started.
We would have built it in twenty twenty-one.
We would have built it in twenty twenty-one. So we wouldn't have had the shovels in the ground in twenty twenty, theoretically, yeah.
Right, because we didn't receive final notice of this. This was, this was the letter that finally told us that we didn't qualify, so it was September first, twenty twenty. So.
So where was the phasing in? It seems to be missing in both of those letters.
They, they were both aware of that through.
But I think that they don't take that as anything, as soon as they said, as soon as you awarded the contract, you were done. So it didn't matter whether we, you know, I mean, we had phasing or not. They believed that as soon as you put, well, he said shovel in the ground, but that's incorrect. As soon as we awarded the contract, we were done. So in January, when we awarded that contract, even though it was phased contract, we were toast.
The original letter before we got notification that we did, that we were disqualified, suggested that we end our contract and wait for an answer. And if, if you end your contract, you run the risk of big suit for breaching contract, right? And that's why when we sat down with Ward Brothers, awarded the project and said, we are, we're waiting notification for a federal grant that we can't start. They were fully aboard with us phasing the project and signed a memorandum of understanding saying that we would just, through motion of council, which allows us to not have to tender certain parts of the project. They, they were happy to work with us with that, but the interpretation from, obviously, the federal government came back and said, no, we've awarded the project, so.
I truly didn't feel like the provincial government put a strong case forward.
I don't think so either, personally, I think it's.
I think it was, I think it's a mismatch of both of them, but I truly think the provincial government could have been stronger on our behalf.
And through the, through this, when the question was asked, why the delay from two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and then into twenty, the original answer was the election, of course, in two thousand and nineteen. And then the second one for why didn't we get a response until September was, well, COVID. Well, you know, we, we didn't get an answer to a letter because of COVID, yet the whole time, we had a construction crew here working on the project. And we're, again, still trying to get this thing done before October, which is six months after our original timeline that was put together for this project. I get so frustrated because we've been working on this process for this pool for well over five years now. And the grant application was two of those years of just waiting. And like I said, nobody's accounting for the hundreds of man-hours that we as staff have put in to try to remain eligible for this, making sure that we're doing everything that we can. And on the other side of it, from a community standpoint, one of the things that I brought up to the MLA in, in one of our conversations is, I don't, you know, you guys remember in December, as this thing was about to be awarded, we either had to move forward with the project or we stood a chance of losing some of the fundraising money that was brought forward. We had a community, you know, service group that, you know, raised potentially a million dollars that said, we'll move on to another project if you guys aren't gonna go ahead with this. So do you lose a million dollars of money that already came from your community or the one point six?
Well, the thing was, there was no guarantee on one point six. There was pretty good feeling about the million dollars raised by the Lys club, so. So anyway, any other, I know that we could go over an hour on this.
Maybe beat up the letter.
Any other thoughts or questions on the letter?
Just one more thing. If, pretend COVID didn't happen. If we waited for whichever local government is happy to work with us anytime after it happened. Sorry, that button a little bit. Our pool would have been shut down anyways.
Right.
Right, because we didn't beat the.
We, we was, we had the new legislation for a troutment that came in in November of two thousand and nineteen. So we wouldn't have been able to open our pool in the condition that it was in before we developed it.
So, and then if we waited with them, then it could have been two years or more for them to make up their mind.
Well, if we would have waited for award, which as soon as it would have been, would have been, you know, in, in coordination with these letters, so. Yeah, we would have been September before we had it known. So if you find out in September and then you do the tender process, which is over a month, as you know, it takes a month to do the tender, so we would have been into October. So same as the answer to Georgia Lee, we would have been in a twenty twenty-one construction season rather than a twenty twenty, that would have lost two years of swimming.
And again, we don't know what the tender prices would have, you know, whether, you know, been increased, you know, would we have seen a two to three or five percent increase potentially? You know, we don't know any of those things. So I think personally that the direction that council went by, you know, unfortunately biting the bullet and just saying, we're gonna run with it, it's just something that's been painful.
But you'll help us with our next big project.
I'm sure they will.
With the size of this project, it might be after many of, many of our, many of our days.
I don't think we have to worry about any other big ones coming.
Okay, so any, any more discussion on that one? If not, we'll move on to the, thank you to the community and supporters letter from the Rowan House. And then the second one is the breakfast with the guys.
I assume that's just for men only, hardly thinks.
I don't think that's what that means, but I think it's, I could be wrong. Anyway, any thoughts or questions on that? Anyway, any thoughts or questions on any of those two? Okay, we'll move on to the letter from Talbot Municipal Affairs Deputy Minister on the map letter.
Now, this one did come directly to myself, uh, so it didn't need to come to council, but I wanted you to be very aware that the Minister, Minister of Municipal Affairs is aware that we have fulfilled all of our requirements for the, uh, municipal accountability program. So we are done until they do it again in another four or five years.
Any thoughts or questions?
Good job. Glad you changed the word.
The one word, one bylaw.
Okay, moving on to the letter, I received this the other day and I forwarded it on to Kim and hopefully we'll get some information. The C P holiday train is not going to run this year. But, you know, Kim had a suggestion that, you know, we might be able to pin in on the format that they do it, we might be able to do big screen and invite the community to come to the C R C parking lot and do an outdoor event type of thing.
Very similar to what we do with the, uh, with the drive-in movies that we, that we have already gained, gotten approval for from A H S. And that's, we mark out the parking lot where everybody can be, we can use an F M tuner to get the sound into vehicles. What we'll do is as they're sharing the information with Tom for this, uh, we'll forward it on to, uh, to our community services manager to make sure that we can try to coordinate something, so that, because it, it does, it brings in, the holiday train is, is a really, uh, really big benefit to our food bank as well, it's, it's one of their major events. So it would be nice to be able to, whatever that looks like in this, in this year of, uh, physical distancing, whatever we can do to still make that happen.
So if you want to kind of mention that with the F C S S too, they might have already heard about it anyway, but, you know, just that you kind of have a, you kind of have the heads up that we're kind of interested in trying to do something if we can.
We'll, we'll get Joan and, uh, and Bonnie to work together on that.
And we don't know what it's going to look like, but it's just something that can, well, yeah.
Just, we had the holiday train last year, so we, we wouldn't have.
We wouldn't have it this year.
So, uh, it's probably too early to speculate, so assuming things go on back to, will it be next year that we get it? Or maybe put off another year at home?
And, and I'm not sure if it's been every two years exactly for us, it has been, okay.
Yeah, and that, and what they do is they divide it, because they've only got two trains to go across Canada. And so they divided so, um, half of Canada, they're really, well, half of the communities that the trucks go through gets it and the other half don't, so. So you, you could be right, that, that might be a thought is that, you know, the people that missed out this year are going to get it next year if it comes through in twenty twenty two. And then ours would be twenty twenty three instead of twenty twenty two. But anyway, as soon as I get some information, I just forwarded on to Kim and Kim was kind enough to put it into the agenda, so.
Kim, if it snows lots, you won't have to mark the parking lot.
Parking lot?
No.
Shovel out this one, so you can.
Little, little stalls.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on that one? Okay, we'll move on to the requests from Vulcan Town Green Street Light request.
I received this request verbally over the phone to begin with, ask for them to, uh, certainly to email me with a, uh, with an official request so the council could review it. It did come in Friday and as you can see, uh, Friday afternoon. So I put it on the agenda so that if council would like to move forward with something, you can give me direction to, uh, come up with a plan and bring it back to council. But so that they know that we're, uh, looking at something with that. Tom and I have had a conversation in the past, I did not, uh, forward that on to the, um, homeowners association at the time. But the majority of the streetlights, as you guys know, in our community are installed on the corners. And the reason for that is to, uh, deal with crosswalks, those sort of things. Mid-block lights are not a normal, uh, practice that we put in place. Uh, block, security, safety, those sort of things are all things that can be considered for those.
But that block is more than a block, isn't it? Like the in length?
No.
No.
It's only a block?
It's not even a full block, you know.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm not seeing that.
On, on the map, and that's, that's the thing.
It's at the corner, uh, behind the golf course and, and where the golf course sheds are.
Yeah.
That's where it's at.
Yeah, so that.
Like Sherne's third house in, right in that corner.
The area between Main Street and First Street North along Eight, Eighth Avenue is where they're, they're most concerned. And that chunk of road, as everybody knows, is in our planning documents, that's not a full road. It's just, uh, the width of a back alley if it's paved because of the development that went in there and building those houses in that condo association. So it is, it is a roadway, but it's not built to true town specs.
It is really dark, you know.
It is, so.
It is, and, and again, too, you know, Kim and I were talking about it earlier too, is that depending on where it's placed and, you know, so, I, I think if we're interested, we could, you know, get some suggestions on where to place it. It might have to be in theoretically on her boulevard, uh, a streetlight if we're going to be to do the corner. And then depending on where the power would come from. There are other, a couple of other suggestions that Kim and I were kind of semi-talking about is that maybe we could approach the, uh, golf course and see if we could do something that would be on the side of their buildings that would light up the sides of their, out onto the street, maybe there's a.
Well, the golf course has a streetlight, well, a big pool light right there in their parking lot, uh, well, straight across from Sherne's.
Uh, I.
Where we lie down there, there's a big, yeah, right, you know where the parking lot is at the side of Sherne's is right across the street? Then it now that's right there beside those town.
That's on First, uh, First Street, yeah.
Right there in the golf course parking lot, there is a big pool with a, with a light on it, like a streetlight hanging there.
Yeah, but not, not in the corner though.
No.
So, so one of, one of the other things that I've, I've thrown out there, and if council gives us direction to explore this further, is, uh, we just removed, uh, poles from the, uh, pool as well. So we, maybe something that we can partner with the golf course on where we could install a new, because they've just recently had some fuel stolen, as everybody knows, in the paper and that. So we could possibly install two poles in that area if the golf course would run power to them, those sort of things. See if we could partner on something that would mutually benefit both, because that backside where the fuel tanks are doesn't have a whole bunch of light. And then the pathway on the, uh, north, or sorry, the south side of that last car shed doesn't have anything, it's, it's very dark in there, so.
So it is a dark corner, but again, no, I mean, if you ride around or drive around in the streets, there's lots of areas and not to try and be little the proposal or philosophy, but there's lots of other areas in town that are pretty dark too, but, um.
Especially when there's still leaves on the trees, it, it really, like you have the corners and then really dense in the middle of it.
And, and we have had requests in the past, you know, to put one in the middle of a block, and I appreciate this, you know, theoretically as a corner, not a middle of a block, but we've had requests that were turned down because of it's, I mean, there's a cost factor to it too. If we go with Forest, um, you know, there's a cost. So if, if we're interested, we could ask administration to come back with some suggestions and they could, uh, look into it and, um.
Happy to put it in ballpark, uh, so that you know, there, there's the capital cost for Forest to put in a pole and, uh, because of course every pole doesn't have a meter on it, they average about thirty five dollars a month is what they cost us, uh, per light, so. And communities can make that request.
So we'll move, then administration looks into it and.
And bring back a proposal?
Do you want to move?
So we're caring, you have that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion on Laura's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, because Karen's done already. Okay, and it's carried unanimously, thank you. Now we need a motion to file the correspondence. Paul?
Laura.
Oh, Laura, oh, I'm sorry, Laura, sorry, sorry. Okay, Laura has moved, uh, to file a correspondence, any discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And it's carried unanimously. Great, thank you, moving on to financials, cash flow. Cash flow, I should say.
That past summer isn't looking very big.
Uh, and of course, those are our, uh, those are our reserves and, uh, yes, they're not that large. But of course, with the capital projects we're doing and the five million plus the one million for the street project, plus about five hundred thousand for the center street. Uh, it's been, it's been a fairly busy summer as far as cash flow, but as you can see, as of, uh, August thirty first, when the statement was captured, that was the last day, uh, that was the day when taxes were due. Uh, because of the extension that you all provided, so you can actually see that we had one point three in the bank that day, which is better than we were.
I could, uh, move this cash flow statement or cash statement be exempt for information?
Okay, so Laura moves it. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the year to date.
I didn't particularly notice anything, but is there anything outstanding?
Lots of areas that were actually in accordance this time of year, as you all know. We're, uh, taking this year's numbers and looking at them for how they'll affect next year's budget. This one's been a really hard year because of changes in programming, uh, different cleaning, you know, app for public works that are recreation facilities, how we're going to deal with, we're, we're currently really struggling with, uh, how the arena will operate and how letting people in, letting people out, uh, those sort of things. Uh, how, how are procedures, you, you saw our procedural stuff, but the day you approve them, uh, the province announces something different. So we're, honestly, the department heads are going through, uh, there is nothing really raising a red flag for us on anything here. It is, there can be operational shortfalls in revenue in some places, uh, campground, campgrounds, uh, ticketing, uh.
You can jump on that.
Yeah, those things, on the other side of it, we didn't hire as many summer students as we are going to, those sort of things, so we're, uh, and as I'll talk about a little bit further in my, uh, in my admit report, we received, uh, notification about, uh, the federal operating stimulus that they're, uh, that they're committing, so I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit more in my report.
So we'll receive this from the issues?
Okay. A lot of questions.
Well, sorry, uh, just regarding the, uh, the tourist center, is that? That was, seems to be open, is it still open?
Yes.
Sundays week?
Yes.
So we, did we hire?
The second person, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they've been in place since May, April, May. And, and really, it, it kind of got, it kind of got overshadowed because we also put summer students in there in the same timeframe, so. Yeah, Corey's been in there and now the, the students are gone, Corey and Elaine are, are sharing them.
So it's just the two.
Just the two of them switching off so we can keep the facility open Sunday's week. So, yes, and we will be slowing it down to, yeah, the, the hours get restricted now.
Okay, any other questions? Since there's no more discussion on Paul's motion, we'll call the question. And then it is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to current business. Communities of the whole meeting, pro- pro- proposed community of all meeting.
So, as, as council knows every year, that you, uh, set a time to review budgets. Some years you have just, uh, myself as administration go through the, the budget depending on the information that's provided. This year with, uh, some of the proposed changes that we're going to have to make, uh, due to operations, uh, we felt that would be beneficial to, uh, and especially being, uh, where you are in, in your terms, uh, to have the department heads come back and actually go through their, uh, their departments, uh, and, and give any explanations firsthand for some of the changes they'd like to see made. We generally try to do this in October, but of course, uh, after, uh, the county, county council has given notice to withdraw from the recreation agreement, that was the reason why we tried to do it in October is because we had to have stuff sent to them so early. Now that we don't have to be that, uh, there is, uh, no rush. We're anticipating that to have everything, uh, together for the budget, uh, by mid to end of October. So, uh, council can look at the calendar, last year you met on a Thursday afternoon. We can bring up the calendar, but basically, any, any time in November, uh, I know that there's some conflicts with afternoon meetings. One thing that we can do with that, and, and really it comes down to a cost effective thing, we, if you bring all of the staff members in, yeah, and we do it in the evening, we have to pay them all, so.
Well, maybe fourteenth isn't a Thursday, am I right?
That was last year. Uh, in two thousand and nineteen, council met on Thursday, November fourteenth. And that, that one was done in the afternoon, so, and I do know that there's a conflict with the afternoons for, uh, for two counselors for sure, so. Just kind of wanted some feedback on when we can put that together, uh, for department heads, we'll obviously have myself, uh, Janice, Bonnie, Stu and Tim come in and, uh, present their portions of the budget. Unless council feels that they just like administration, myself to do it, and then, of course, we don't have to call in staff to do that, so.
Could we do this Saturday, would that work for?
Saturday, you have to pay all the staff as well, because they don't.
That works Saturdays.
Well, I would like to hear from the department heads, it's, I always find that it's more informative, I guess, to hear each one of them.
Can forgive you guys enough notice, can it make it work?
I can try, but I can't guarantee anything, because I have one person that can watch the shop if I'm not there.
Okay, Michael, Michelle.
Um, if it's not on a Wednesday or Friday, yes, um, we'll leave this in the afternoon, the better.
I'm sorry, yeah, can you say this better?
So with Wednesday or Friday you couldn't do, but you could do a Monday or Tu- Monday, Tuesday, Thursday?
Yes, and yeah, later, later in the afternoon, the better.
And last year, because of the length of time, we started at one o'clock and we're, we were done, uh, before the end of the day. But if you start at one o'clock, get through the department heads and want to continue with myself into the evening, that's fine as well. We have a council meeting in November, uh, we have a council meeting on the ninth and the twenty third, so you could do, you know, sixteen, seventeenth.
Twelfth or nineteenth or?
The, the nice part about, uh, yeah, would be the sixteen, seventeenth or nineteenth is that if you're happy with the budget, you can bring it forward at this meeting. Uh, one of the things that if you do want to see changes, uh, the more time we have, and then, uh, one thing to remember is you only have one meeting in December. So, uh, it will, any changes would have to be, if you left it any later than that, you would only have one more chance to look at it. If you, theoretically, if you looked at it the sixteen, seventeenth or the nineteenth.
What about the twelfth?
Or the twelfth, yeah, that's right after a council meeting, that, that would give us more time to work on it.
The unfortunate thing is this November eleventh is day four, but, um.
Oh, yeah, no, and, but the stat and everything, everybody does that day off.
Does it have a day off or?
Does the stat affect your ability on the next day?
Before the twelfth? So, so I mean, it would affect you if you took the twelfth afternoon off then?
No, definitely not, it wouldn't, yes.
Okay.
Well, you, Laura?
Um, Thursday would work better for me, because Broden works Sunday to Wednesday, if she's the one that watches the shop when I, and I need to be somewhere else. She works elevens, Sunday to Wednesday.
So if we did the twelfth, Thursday, the twelfth, the one o'clock, would that?
Will that work or?
I will get in touch with her and ask her and let you know as soon as I get an answer.
Okay.
I do think that really, I know there's a cost having staff. I do think that really, I know there's a cost having staff, but I, I do think it's probably more important that we have our council members, uh, attend.
Absolutely.
So...
I'll just, uh...
If we can get them, you know, whether we stagger and put it a little later in the day and then have them here first and then can do the last part or something.
So the only one that we have on vacation that day is Nancy and Teresa, so we'll be able to manage that. Uh, Nancy's stuff, we can bring forward fairly easily. I can be bound. So that works well from the staffing. Now you've all seen our, 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 our holiday schedule and how we look at it.
We weren't quick enough.
Yeah, it's available for anybody that wants to see it.
Okay, well, why don't we push for that day?
So November twelfth at, uh...
Twelfth and...
At one P M?
See if we can, on that recommendation, it says November the twelfth, it says twenty nineteen, so...
Oh, sorry, twenty twenty. Can you see that in that motion here? Thank you. What says to review the twenty twenty one budget though?
Well, I know...
That's, that's well in advance.
But then I, I also got caught on the November the fourteenth at the top. I didn't read it. I, I'm now, so I gotta catch you on Sunday.
Well, and I, and I can, I can open that one. I did, uh, I, I don't wanna ruin too much for you, but now that we've accomplished for well over a year, a lot of these documents are, uh, transferable to the next year. So I, so sometimes I don't catch every one of my dates.
Okay, so we need a motion to... George Lee, thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll call a question. Yeah, guys, carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the organizational meeting.
So traditionally, uh, well, the M G A says that you have to hold the annual organization meeting after the third, uh, Wednesday, or sorry, the third Monday of October, and that's based on the election, uh, when it falls. So we have to hold a, uh, an organization meeting. As you know, when you go through the organization meeting, you do your committee appointments, any changes that you wanna see inside there, and then just review the policies for deputy mayor, uh, signing authority, those sort of things, make sure that they're all standing. Uh, one of the things we joked about is we may add the establishment of the town office to that every, every meeting. So, but this is, uh, the, we used to hold them on a separate date and try to hold them in between, but really it's an hour long meeting. Uh, and I believe last year was the first time we had did it, uh, before the council meeting. We started at six P M and, uh, and then finished the org meeting and then started the council meeting at seven P M. Council can do it before or after the meeting. The hard part about doing it after a meeting is you may have to adjourn the meeting, or, sorry, uh, recess the meeting, do your org meeting if, if you have some emergency come up in council.
But if you pick a time, you know, we have to, we're not done by eight, and we're, if we're done by eight, at eight, and it doesn't start until eight thirty or nine, then...
You gotta sit here until...
So you sit here. So, which is the best, to start a little early or...
I say start before.
So six, six, six o'clock?
I don't know, who's six work for you, Michelle?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, we'll do six o'clock. We'll keep it to an hour. One thing I did wanna ask, uh, inside here, not looking for direction on it, just more, uh, I, I know that there's been a conversation amongst council about, uh, the election of the mayor and, you know, uh, the merits of doing, uh, what the county does with appointing a lead from within council, that sort of thing. Uh, I will add it to the agenda to the organization meeting if you would like me to. Uh, and the only reason is if you want to have a serious discussion where you would like to bring something back to council, you could have the discussion in your organization meeting, give direction to bring it to the next council meeting, not the one you're having right after that, but the, obviously the two weeks after. The reason why you have to have that discussion now is if you, for some reason, wanted to move ahead with something, you need to pass bylaws that need to be advertised at least a hundred and twenty, uh, days before, sorry, a hundred and sixty days before the election. So, if the election is in October, the very last time, very last date that you could technically have your, uh, bylaw passed by would be April twenty first. So, doesn't sound like much, but if you actually wanna do the process and have it completed, you'd have to start, you know, early in the new year to actually have that conversation. So, just thought I'd bring it up. I know it's been brought up in a few different, uh, open conversations that you guys have had about the merits of both, so, you know, if you do, if you do want to entertain that conversation, uh, that, that would be a good time to do it inside your organization meeting.
Okay.
We'll have to make sure we get through the committees nice and quick, cause that might be a longer conversation.
Well, I mean, again, you know, maybe, but something, you know, for you folks to think about too, uh, the pros and the cons, and you can see some advantages and disadvantages, I'm sure. And if you have questions and you wanna phone me and ask my, you know, opinions on which directions are, are why some councillors have, have brought it forward in the past. And, um, it's been discussed lots of times in the past. It's never been officially done. So, so if you wanna phone me, I'll tell you why one way or the other it's been done, and then it's up to you guys to bring it, discuss it then.
And I, I'll, by doing it this way, I'll put it on the agenda with a quick report of what the M G A allows and, uh, and what the norm is.
Okay, so, um, I guess we need to...
Hold that meeting at six P M?
Yes, so we need a motion to hold meeting at six o'clock on October twenty sixth, move to Paul. Any discussion on Paul's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to seven three. Uh, hopefully everybody's had an opportunity to kinda take a look at the proposal or a question that's maybe been raised by someone in the community. We'd have a scramble intersection of those three.
Andy Gomes?
Yeah.
So the report we put together, uh, Bonnie worked with the, uh, with requests. This was obviously discussed at a tourism meeting. Um, the person that brought it up felt that it was, uh, worth bringing to council for consideration. Uh, one of the things we found when we started doing our research on these things, although aesthetically nice, they're meant for, uh, places that have two to three thousand, or sorry, one to three thousand pedestrians per hour, which is kind of outside our realm. And the other discussion is, uh, streetlights really impact how these things work because, uh, where, where a four-way stop with a stop sign, it's meant to alternate traffic as they go around. When these things are in place and somebody is crossing on a diagonal, all four directions have to stop, which means the streetlights have to be coordinated so that all four. So, what they do is the streetlights, uh, allow for crossing this way, then they allow for crossing this way, which allows a green light one direction, a green light the other, and then, and that is finished, then all lights stop and then the crisscross happens. Now, of course, we don't have, again, enough traffic to, uh, to justify that, but aesthetically, you know, people crossing, uh, on the angles, uh, it will be a quicker route, but, uh, we tend to have confusion with our four-way stops as it is. So, uh, there's, uh, some concern that we're brought forward with that as well. Way, uh, one thing that I did want to bring up, uh, as, and it's not part of the report, and it was because the question was asked to me today. It looked as though we were painting the crosswalks without this decision even coming to council. That's not what happened. We had to paint those cross on the corners anyway without war. And then if the crisscross go in and are first by council, those get painted on top of those, in the middle of those, uh, four anyway. So we needed to install the ones that were, uh, were going in anyway, and they were part of the original contracts. So council can have a discussion on it. We try to put as much background as we can. There's merit to it. If this does not alleviate jaywalking or the other things, it's, uh...
Couple of ones. I grew up in Victoria and they had these with all the lights. They don't have them anymore. They're all gone. And as a stranger coming into a town, I don't think you're gonna expect a high crosswalks. So, it might be hazardous. That's my thoughts.
Okay, any other questions?
I just feel we don't have the volume to, to warn that because I think it will be, well, in my opinion, total chaos. And, and I suppose we could work it out eventually, but I really don't feel that, uh, it would be that beneficial to, to moving traffic. That's my opinion. And I, I don't think we have enough foot walk downtown to want something like this either. I don't think we have a problem with pedestrians crossing anywhere. If it was here, when you're going down Main Street, if somebody was running from Dolman's to the bank, you'd already just stop. It just motion for them to go. Like it takes, what, two seconds? So it's not.
Encouraging jaywalking. No, that's exactly it. That's part of living in a small town.
You were telling me I have a problem with in the winter when they put that stupid snowbank in the middle of the street. I can't jump that anymore. I have to watch them corner down.
Anecdotally, I did receive a complaint one day that someone lost a shoe in. And I didn't quite know how to respond because like my first reaction was you shouldn't have been jaywalking. That wasn't sensitive.
Okay, so we got a couple of other...
When are they planning to do those upranks to the brick sidewalk areas?
Uh, probably next spring. Uh, it's just, it's just a timing and money thing now.
Yeah, no, I just was curious.
And I don't think that they're going to do them all at once. Like I think they're gonna try and pick on some new ones first and then, and then try and progress and do some more. I mean, I guess if they have time and money, they'll do more. But I think the plan is, is to, because they're gonna do it within the, the town's budget, theoretically, is unless we put some funds towards that project in our budget, yeah.
Stu, Stu's trying to manage it within his own resources. So, as we're all aware, with the capital projects we did this year, we're not, most likely not going to have a capital project next year, but this, uh, he's, he's gonna try to, uh, put some resources to it. And, and really, it's just like doing the lights or anything. He's gonna do the first couple to see how long they take and how much they, they cost and, and then come together with a long-term plan. So, his focus, again, I, obviously Tom's talked to Stu a little bit about it, is to pick the worst ones, uh, first ones that have shrubs that were removed for the lights up there, uh, and a little bit of a disrepair. We, we don't, definitely don't wanna leave it that way because...
The reason I asked is because, part of the reason that this, uh, scramble thing was brought up was for people on scooters and such, because they have to come down and around and then back to the, to the crosswalk. So, I, I think that is part of what brought this up to start with. So if the slopes go down straight across at the crosswalk, then it's no longer a concern.
And see, the only ones that have them on the corners are on Center Street first. The, it's, I mean, yeah, Center Street first, because the other ones, um, come off, or Center Street second, I should say, um, at the hotel. The other ones are all at the cor- are the, and part of the reason was is they were put in later and to try and accommodate, uh, uh, handicap and, or, uh...
Accessible.
Accessible. We didn't have enough money to do two on each one, so we chose to do the cheaper route and, um, put a...
Sometimes you have to.
Yeah. So that was the reason. But that's the only intersection. Theoretically, if we did scramble at those other three entries, or other two intersections...
You'd have to redo all those.
Would have to redo all of them. So this way we can get away with just doing four.
Yeah.
And, and one thing that council has in budget already is, uh, is, I believe it was four years ago, council allocated five thousand dollars to replacing two, at least two of those per year, uh, the making accessible stuff. And that started from, uh, uh, from a public safety standpoint to make sure that, uh, people from extended care of the hospital and Peter Goshmunch could get to downtown with, uh, with walkers' wheelchairs, those sort of things. So, they've got that complete. So now we're starting to do it inside our street program and, uh, so modifications at that corner, uh, when we do it will be, will easily done. It's just the, the time that we do it. As you know, those corners of Main Street are huge chunks that need to be done, so they'll, they'll need a specific budget for them.
Okay, anything else?
I'm just gonna say this, the crisscross there, I think that would impede their traffic flow, uh, cause it's slow enough when you get four people coming up, four lights stop, let alone having pedestrians going here, there and everywhere. I, I think it, it's a great idea if you've got enough people and you've got streetlights for just before we stop. And I don't think it's, uh, would make things possible at all.
Okay.
As, as you can see from the recommendation from administration, uh, we kinda left it up to council to, uh, either approve or deny. So, uh, that's kinda...
We really haven't heard from Shell yet. If, did you have a comment or a thought?
Um, I think I'm kind of of the same mind as, um, most of you guys were. I don't think that we have the volume to be able to actually facilitate and then to properly, like it just seems like the benefits don't outweigh the cost, especially with having such a small tax base. Um, and it's, when there's gonna be other solutions, um, that are available that solve that problem, it just seems very redundant to have to then spend more money when it could be spent on better things in the community.
Well, and then there's the potential to have to teach everybody how the four-way stop now works with that thing in the middle too, right?
Well, and I, and I, and I'm not a hundred percent sure about the traffic rules on them because as you, again, the four-way stop has very specific rules, the yield link to the right and, and first one to the stop, that sort of thing. That completely changes when pedestrians, because you're not allowed to enter into an intersection while somebody's in a crosswalk. So now if you put two crosswalks in the middle, you have now stopped traffic for all four corners. And, and then that, we've all sat at that four-way stop where two people pull up and don't know who has the right of way, where everybody sits doing this. So, it, it's, yeah, there, there's a potential for some, uh, for some confusion on that. And, and potentially somebody not understanding that and proceeding through a crisscrossed, uh, uh, intersection with somebody in the crosswalk. That potentially, uh, poses a risk as well.
Okay, so somebody wish to make a motion?
I'll move to deny.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion on Paul's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to committee reports, written ones. Uh, we've got one there from, uh, Vulcan District Waste. If you notice the date on it, um, it's taken us until, we just had a meeting the other day. It took us five months to get it formed.
Are you supposed to meet each month?
Well, try and meet at least every two months if we can, but it is, it's been painful to get it formed. Painful.
Any particular reason or just...
Well, I'm not sure. It just seems that there's one community that never seems to ever get their representative to show up. Um, and, uh, yeah, I'm not sure. It's just really disappointing. Okay, any questions on that one? Moving on to the way, uh, municipal planning commission? Any questions referring to all these, current, I think, no, not since September fifteenth or whatever. Sure we'll hear.
Yeah, it's, it's fairly new. Uh, one thing that we'll be coming to council from is we'll be the deferred, uh, servicing agreement with, uh, the whispering, or Metta Lark.
Whatever, whatever they are.
Henry Court and, uh, and his development group. Anything helpers just sometimes go away from you.
Wait there, you're old here. See how many you can find.
Every meetings, covered. Okay, any questions on that one? If not, we'll move on to the golf course. Okay, no questions. So we'll move on to Vulcan Regional Response to Elder Abuse Council. Zoom meeting at August, August 18th. Okay, no questions on that one. Moving on to the ORSC, Annual Report Financial Statements.
And this was ordered out separately from the evidence and what else. We want to make sure council added this, uh, this report.
I'm sure if anybody has any questions, you could ask Lyle and they'll be able to. Probably read this report three or four times. I'm glad, thank you. Any questions on any of those? If not, somebody wished to, uh, that we filed a law? Committee reports? Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And is Carrie can ask me? Okay, moving on to local ones, Mr. Taylor.
I was at NPC and the golf course, both of which you have in front of you. And other than the convention, I don't have anything else. I did think the convention was quite well managed. Rather difficult process, but it did work reasonably well. That's all I've got.
Okay, any questions for Paul? Hearing none, we want to council debate.
Um, I also did a few days at the convention. And FCSS, and at FCSS now they're down to four employees and that's counting Joan. Everybody else is gone. And that they're advertising right now for members at large for both the food bank and FCSS, which will sit on the same board. So, so we definitely need a few more members at large in here. So Joan's put out advertising and she's put out an ad for another person for a few hours a week. Cause they just, she needs some help with different things and that. We have money left over this year at FCSS because there wasn't as many programs being offered because of COVID. So actually I think they had about $55,000 left over, which they have to spend by December 31st. So Joan's got a few ideas where it needs to go and, um, like fixing up the youth center downstairs. Cause it really needs a kitchen and bathrooms. They put carpet in bathrooms, don't they, for kids? Like, oh, why? But anyway, so we're going to put some money into that and, and just some things that we need upstairs and that too. Um, so yes, and we will be looking for a new youth manager and a new youth assistant to the manager. Cause both of those positions are empty now also. So she will be advertising for those two, try to get somebody else in there. And, um, we're going to set up a new, um, go through some policies that we have down there on hiring. And that's so it's going to be a little bit to get all these policies up to date and get them a little bit more specific. Um, hiring people and, you know, their responsibilities and stuff like that. So, so that's going to be a time-consuming thing. We all know how much time policies are to do, so. And that's about it. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for George Ray?
Is the, the youth center, it's not open, is it?
Um, not right now because there's not a full-time youth manager down there. Um, it has been opened up to some small groups, like just little, maybe four or five kids in a group could go down.
Court.
Yeah, yeah. But other than that, um, until she gets a full-time manager down in there, then it won't be. And, and being closed, it'll give them time to do some rounds down there. Like the kitchen is horrible down there and to redo those bathrooms and stuff like that too, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Can FCSS take that $55,000 and put it into a reserve?
Well, I don't know if they could not, but they, they could really use it, like it upgrades and stuff like that. And it has to, I think part of it's going to go for a new security system also, one with cameras. So Joan can check the security cameras off her phone or the other employees can do that. Cause there is maybe something like that down in there. And I think that's where a lot of the trouble stand from. There was no way to.
You've got three months.
Yes. Yeah, no, she's, she's got it all.
Okay.
At, at this point, at this point, it's just a surplus in the end of the budget they're projecting, right?
Right, yeah.
But they're probably going to use it. If they, their year end is still, uh, the end of the year of the seasons.
Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, so I don't think she'll have a problem spending on what's needed. Like it won't be spent on a party or anything, but it'll be done on stuff that's needed down there.
So I have a quick question. If they have that much left over, does it have to be gone by December 31st? Or does it have to be allotted to something by December 31st?
I think it'd be allotted.
At this point, it's not left over. It's still in their budget. The year, it's before they're, if I'm interpreting that correctly, and they're projecting a surplus in the budget.
Okay.
So rather than running to the end of the year with that surplus, they're going to make plans to expand that funding. Because on the other side of that, any funding left at the end needs to be reported to the province and needs to be allocated for the upcoming year or return. Because, uh, the province provides 80% of the funding for FCSS.
Okay, well, I was just wondering if like that money that's left over, does it have to be actually spent by the 31st? Or does it just have to be, okay, we're getting these bathrooms done. We've allotted the money to that. The contractor will be here January the 5th.
Yes, it just has to be earmarked and, and of course, it has to be reported to the province.
Okay, so, all right, that's my question now, thank you.
Okay, anything else for George Ray? Hearing none, we'll move on to councillor Magnus.
Uh, it was at the NPC meeting and the, uh, conference distance thing, which was good. I thought Peter Matzovich was a pretty good speaker on that. And, uh, just speaking with the general public, uh, there's people at Whispering Creek that have concerns about the cost of their water. I hadn't heard anything about it, uh, about the cost of their water. That the town is going to be up in their rates for whatever reason. And I said, oh, well, I will certainly bring that up to council, but I have not heard anything about it, so.
There is a, if I may, there's a commission meeting on the 8th of October. And that will be discussed. But other than that, I suspect somebody may have been down to your neighbors indulging. Because no, there's been no discussion on it.
I, I, I believe that there was a, a conversation amongst, uh, some members of the golf course and, uh, members of Whisper Creek and our public works formen, trying to account for raw water. There is raw water that is current, uh, Whispering Creek is currently fed for raw water for their creek off of the hospital line, which is not being built. So that may have sparked that conversation that if usage in that is not managed, there may become a charge for that water being, uh, transferred from the reservoir up to the, to the creeks. I believe is the background that I got on.
Okay.
So for somebody that has never received a bill for water, that can be a concern. They may end up, but it's more of a management thing. If it's being run down the ditch, it's not being managed properly. So it will need to be accounted for if it's not being managed properly. That hopefully that covers it.
So it might be more on the raw water side, not on the.
It's not, it's not a treated water thing from the background.
Because we haven't, we haven't changed our rates, you know, this year since beginning, we set the, set the rates and changed the rates because the commissions did go through with their rate increase. We put it back to, you know, so since then, every other residence hasn't seen a increase though. So if you're speaking to this person, you might just say there hasn't been a rate increase by the town. So who knows, maybe we'll find out with budget this year what might happen.
I, but I believe this is all stamped on raw water because they're, they're not being built for raw water at this point.
Okay.
And it was suggested that they may start to be built.
Fair enough. Okay, any questions for Lyle? Hearing none, we'll move on to councillor Thomas.
Um, I have the library. Um, we discussed, uh, potential changing hours and services. And things are moving smoothly the way they are. So we decided, uh, to just keep things at the status quo for the, for the moment. Um, there are some kids webinars being offered for free. Um, they started on the 24th of September. I believe all the info is on Facebook, but you can also give money and call at the library. Um, tourism, we didn't have a forum. That's where this scramble crosswalk thing came up. But we did have some pretty good new merchandise ideas that are going in for approval. We didn't get a whole lot accomplished with no forum. It was just conversations.
Okay, any questions for Lyle? Hearing none, we want to councillor Robbie.
Uh, Dylan, committee report, or committee report, committee meeting that I had, pardon me, um, was committee futures. And that was this past Thursday over Zoom. And it ended up being because we had skipped a month that it was three and a half hours. Um, but a lot of it was going through like the, um, quarterly budget as well as, so for legal, we were with, um, earlier previously and they said they kind of split off from their firm and, um, they are starting their own venture. And so we are in the process of changing, um, legal representation, but really we're not. Uh, it was in KOS and then now I believe it's like achieved legal. But there's so much red tape and hoops and stuff to jump through because it's a completely 100% government-funded program. So it's definitely, uh, anything like that comes with quite a bit of work. The staff are doing really well still, like working from home and kind of doing adjustments with they have to meet face-to-face with clients, how that works and what that looks like. Um, unfortunately, a large chunk of, um, the positive side of money that comes from PD Futures is from the rent. Um, in their Oktok's office, they'll actually rent out, I believe it's three, um, office rooms upstairs, a conference room, and then one or two downstairs. And that's what they get quite a bit of their revenue from. So unfortunately with COVID, it hasn't, it's been down considerably and it's kind of, it's given these really interesting challenges where on one hand, they got funding from the government to keep their summer student on until like October. But yet on the other hand, no relief in terms of, because they've lost all of this rental, um, income. But it's, um, Oktok's, their, um, new library facility with all the materials and stuff. There's talk about PD Futures possibly in there, but again, it's the same thing of, you know, a, with that, you're also at the mercy of another organization with another board and everything else. And, um, and then losing out on what we currently have. Because we did get a $64,000, um, with everything was going for business retention, um, and to use towards any of this. And it actually qualified to use for salary for a summer student and keeping them on longer and that sort of thing. Um, which was really great, but, yeah. I was just kind of navigating the normal and how that works in terms of, um, businesses and funding and that kind of thing.
Okay, any questions for Michelle?
Thank you. I'm going to councillor Armstrong. Um, I had a meeting, the Vulcan County Health and Wellness Foundation. We were discussing to a certain degree, the grand opening, the walkthroughs. We didn't have a date yet when we had our meeting and that came out as a, I think Gail said something out last night. And, um, so we will do the walkthroughs for the donors, uh, as many as they can get through, starting tomorrow morning. So they do, um, every half hour, approximately five in a group. You don't want it too big. And so we'll go from nine till 4:30. So it's probably quite a few people will get through. Uh, the grand opening, we had a Zoom meeting with Alberta Health. I, we came away saying executive will sit down and try and decide what we're going to do. It, um, didn't flow and didn't make as many final arrangements as we thought we might. And part of it was based on when is the clinic going to be moving and when are they going to occupy the space? So, um, the executive were to me either last week or maybe even they met today. So I'll try and find out some things here. I attended the convention. Um, it was interesting. It was different. Uh, as you said, um, Peter Matzovich was a good speaker, so was Haley Wittenpouser. And, um, the education sessions, like Tom said, sometimes you don't always pick the right ones when you go to the conventions either and you sit through them. And I think, you know, I think a, a lot of them couldn't give any answers. And I mean, I guess we all knew they couldn't give an answer, you know? But I guess you went thinking, well, somebody's going to tell you what's going to happen. Well, nobody knows what's going to happen for a lot of things. So that was, it was, it's never a waste of time. Of course, I'd go to school forever if somebody let me, but it's, it's another thing. So that was my, and I have most of my meetings. I have South Grove this week and, uh, Marcus Foundation tomorrow.
Okay, any questions for Laura?
Just see a comment regarding the, the convention. I think it's more, more the, the one-on-one where you can talk to people on the side. Who are experiencing the same things as opposed to just trying to listen to one person say their, their thing. And I certainly get more out of it with people.
I think it's when you're meeting, when you're in line for lunch, when you're having lunch, when you're meeting afterwards that, that you, you know, get all these information or ideas. So that part was definitely missing. But I think they did tremendous job considering, you know, what they had to, how they had to work with it, so.
Okay, did you say we were going up there on Friday, this Friday coming?
I think he was going to say that in his report.
Yes, yes, Friday, three, yeah.
And you're going to send another reminder of that?
I will.
All right, I will write it down there. Thank you.
A calendar invite and I will send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else for Laura? Well, thank you. Well, I have quite a few. The pool, um, and then I have a pool meeting this coming Wednesday. But, um, I have stopped by quite a few times at the pool and, and keeping those guys in, in check. And it, it seems to be coming along pretty good. So, um, hopefully we'll see some more cement poured this week. And, um, and so we'll see more, more of the deck poured, which will really change the look of the facility. And they can start working on the siding. Windows are in, um, some of the windows, I should say, are in, not all the windows, but they're working on. Uh, power went in today, uh, so now they are on a new power system and unhooked the shack. So I would doubt that the shack will disappear shortly. Um, I had an SEWA executive meeting and then, um, and I had a meeting with, um, what's SEWA, with jobs, um, which is economic innovation, jobs, economic innovations. Um, it was a meeting over the phone and that's the one I had mentioned to Joseph where there was three bureaucrats there. And there was one bureaucrat that didn't know what he could do or couldn't do or whatever. So we're going to tune him up. Um, we had a couple of. We had a couple of ministers there and so we did bar forward in a letter to the Minister of Jobs to, to get some direction from him to his staff, hopefully going after some funds. The next one was, is we had a meeting with, first SEWA with JBS, which is the Canadian plant in Brooks. And we went with two of their employees to see where we can start moving the process forward. They're a huge company, gigantic company. They're a little bit, probably smaller than Cardiol in one hand, but yet they've got international money involved in it. So the process of getting information from them is unbelievable. Then had a solid waste and so you saw that, we only had, we just had a quorum. There is a proposed budget on coming down the lines. There is a proposed increase. Most of it, the increase is due to tippage and trucking because we don't know what that's going to be. And then another increase will be in, in pickup. And again, the recommendation from the board to administration is to, for the next three years, is to hold their wages and their benefits in that for three years. So they're, they're trying to freeze the wages and benefits for three years, but we have no control over power and all those other areas. Insurance, insurance has really taken a, again, a big kick. I'm not sure what you guys feel at home, but mine took a 10% of my house and you just said, do that if you don't like it, go somewhere else and everybody else says, stay where you're at. So anyway, there is, we're trying to hold it to zero on the budget line. I did attend the AMA on the Thursday, which was resolutions and opening ceremonies. I really quite enjoyed some of the, a bit of the discussion on the resolutions. It was well done. The young lady that they hired for the lawyer, she was excellent. She was just excellent. She was not afraid to stand up and say, no, stop, whichever. She was good.
Do this again.
Yeah. Unfortunately, on the AMA on Friday morning, I only was able to stay until about thirty because I had to go to SEWA board meeting in Champion. We had a face-to-face in Champion with SEWA. But anyway, I did enjoy a bit of that discussion with the ministers. I thought that, you know, again, like Lorna said, they really never answered some of the questions. I didn't expect them to, but I thought that they were at least kind enough to, are good enough to participate, you know, especially in this time of uncertainty. So I mean, they never promised us anything, but they never also, and again, like exactly what Lyle and Lorna and George D and probably Paul feels, the same thing is, I really missed us and visiting around the table for breakfast and lunch and going our own separate ways and kind of visiting and then, you know, us as a group trying to get together and the bonding that I felt that we as an organization or a group gained from that. And I missed that and, and I did miss the, you know, being able to leave and go home for lunch and then come back and go, hmm, should I come back for lunch after lunch? You know, sometimes. And I did have the one where we, I came down here to do the, you know, Zoom or whatever format it was for the jobs one, I was in there and Lorna and Kim were here listening to them. But, so I didn't get a lot of, see a lot of the sessions. I did try and go on the one night for about two seconds. It ran around in a circle and I closed my computer and. The SEWA board meeting was really good again. We had a great representation. There was only two board members that did attend and the rest were all there. And I think we're going to start going back to the executive meeting in person instead of over Zoom. I have found Zoom is a very challenging, and we tried two other formats and, you know, sometimes you just can't hear somebody talking as well as you should and you can't see the body language either. Like, you know, sometimes seeing somebody's body language, I think is really important to say, am I getting the information to you that you need or isn't going over your head or, you know? And so, and again, too, the nice thing about the board meeting is there's two of the board members that stayed after to discuss. There are still, we've got a split board in whether we should be going after funding to do a couple third-party reviews and we've got a couple board members. I think we should be more or less what I said to Joseph, saying to the provincial government, is this a project you want to put your hat on or is this a project that we need to go to the feds and say, here Justin, we've got a project where you can say, uh, we funded or we made this project move forward, you know, 700 million tons of greenhouse gases in its lifetime, you know, looks after 150,000 people, you know? We're not going to bury the garbage. No, no, no. So I've got a bit of a broken board that way where some of the things that we need to move forward on, putting them into the ground. So we need to flush that out. The other one, and again, like I said, the pool meeting on Wednesday, but the one I went to, which had nothing to do with this, was Brenda Finley retired, or yeah, she's retired, fully officially retired. And we went to a function at the CRC, there was 42 people there and that's it. They were all AHS because it was semi-AHS program. They brought health inspector in to make sure that the tables were barred up apart and it was really different. We all wore masks other than when we ate and, and people were walking around wiping everything down after and in between. It was, but it was, it was kind of nice. I mean, so I, I appreciate, I've started my career in politics on the hospital board, so Brenda's got 42 years in and I have 40 years in this year. So it was kind of neat to, to participate in her function. It was all invited guests, like there was, there was only three of us, four of, I guess five of us males there and the rest were all ladies. And it's part of it because no spouses were asked other than Joan and me were the only two spouses other than Brenda and Tammy, but their kids came up. So it was nice, it was a nice, nice function. Any questions on any of the Monday night one?
She had one in the afternoon, I guess she had one in the morning, one in the afternoon. It was not nearly that regimented, that's a good word.
Yeah, I know this one here, I mean, this guy came in, Joan said when they were setting up, that he had to measure, he put down signs in between the seats. There was a seat here and a seat there and he put a sign, you know, a physical distance, but everyone, every, every table, even though all the tables were identical, he measured every table, how far apart the tables were. It was really quite interesting.
I always knew that.
And, and you know, the bathrooms had to be all washed down prior to, you know, and then, so I convinced my wife instead of washing down all the stalls as you barricade part of it off and then you only, coming 42 people, you don't need 15 stalls. I didn't think so, okay. That's what they did. And all the tables had to be washed prior and after and chairs, all the chairs had to be washed prior and after. Yeah. So it was, probably took them an hour and a half to set out 42 people and probably at least that long to set them. So it was, but it was interesting. Yeah. Anything else? If not, somebody wish to file verbal reports?
I will.
Thank you, Laura. Any question on Laura's, or any discussion on Laura's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And Carrie, you now has a speak. Okay, moving on to Mr. Boss' activities.
So the management activity report, things of note on here, based on just a verbal conversation with Northland Company on follow-up on the AIC Society. They're going to write a letter on behalf of council to the legal council of the AIC Society with what was mentioned at the, at the meeting about picking a new date for a deadline, most likely November, sometime in November. And then if not, based on the suggestion by Counselor Magnuson to make them aware of our donation policy, that if, if they aren't gone by that, if they aren't removed by that point, the town will consider them donated and see what kind of response we get from them. So that's follow-up on that because that one's been outstanding for, for quite some time. Next one, we got quite a bit done from the last few meetings. Obviously Counselor Armstrong hasn't been able to attend the South Grow meeting, which is next week or this week, so follow-up on that motion will be coming. And then the last one down there that, the live bar, I wanted to bring an update to council. We did give direction to Community Services Manager to move forward with the execution of an agreement and also brought council's concern, that six-year timeframe that was mentioned and quite a bit of discussion around and they've agreed to lower it to five years. So that was a, a nice long, and so we'll be executing that document in that from, from the list as well. That's everything on that report. Anybody ask any questions? My CAO report, very straightforward with the pool. Hosted the AUMA sessions in here as a few of you were able to attend. I attended every one of the education sessions and the convention itself, mostly because I had to, I'm in here anyway, so I was home with, with my kids on September 17th, but was able to stream both education sessions from home as well. My kids didn't get anything out of either one of them, but we did, we did sit through them. I've been reviewing, reviewing, makes sense, giving, giving direction from the county that they wanted us to draft the new rec agreement. I've been reviewing and different agreements for funding and really looking at really simplifying that document to, based on, of course, some of the conversation from legal council as well, making very, make it very simplified, but stipulating things that need to be included in timelines for when payments need to, need to be made and then doing the schedule of what that is. I will bring that to council before we, we send it off to the county for review. So I'll hopefully be able to spend some more time on that in the next coming, upcoming weeks. We've had quite a few community engagements, just lots of questions the last little while. We sent out the final notice for the tax sale stuff to the Gazette, some of those advertisements you'll see in the paper. We have four properties, but only three owners, so we're most likely will see those taken care of, those, their, their ones that have been there in the past, so, and usually take care of them in the last few weeks before the, before the sale comes up. Again, I was out in the office for childcare on 17th, met with county administration for the rec agreement, which I gave you a quick update when you were at County at the last meeting. Tango for the pool, site meeting, we have another one Wednesday. Tom's pretty, pretty good at keeping on top of those guys.
Three times a day?
Not only does he attend all of our meetings, he makes sure that he's banging against the fence at least three times a day so that they don't, that the mayor's there paying attention to what's going on. And on the other side of it, I think they really appreciate it because they bounce a lot of ideas off of that so that they don't have to bring change orders and things back to us, you know? It's between Stu and, Stu, Rob and Tom, they, they very adequately represent the town's opinion of, especially seeing something they've all operated at the pool long-term.
I forgot to mention too, that they finished the, the lane pool.
Minor.
Minor today. So it's done. So now they're going to start moving up into the shallower ones.
And the education sessions and AUMA convention obviously zoomed. Overall, it, it worked well for what they were trying to do. Like they ran into little glitches like everybody does, but another question that was asked is why were their executive in that Tallas Convention Center? And it was because they have commitments to those places years in advance that they can't get out of, so. And that's, that's my report.
Any questions for Kim?
This is really not about your report because that's in the past, but will there be a communication meeting this year with the county and the delegates?
Lowman is the next one to host and really they, Tracy is hesitant to commit because some of the delegates aren't moving forward very well with the COVID thing, meeting with others and so. And Lowman doesn't have a facility to have it out of here right now.
But again, you know, if we go back to in history, when we had communication meetings, we never had a meal. The only reason we put the meal in was it enticed people to come. You know, if there wasn't enough interest, you know, so that, that would eliminate one bit of a dilemma that sometimes you have is having a meal that can be catered to or whatever. I mean, it can be done, it's just a little harder. So we might have mentioned to Tracy or some of them is that to get 30 people or 40 people in a facility, if we could have it at the lodge hall or we could have it at Champion Hall or.
Scarcity or.
Yeah, you know, and still get the numbers and keep the proper distancing if there was enough, you know?
Interested in having.
Interested. I, I agree with Lorna that, you know, well, I assume that you, you mean as a positive that it would be great to get together.
Well, yeah, I think that's, you know, like when you're talking about the rec agreement and pool and all this, I think it's important that everyone shares their part of the things from their community, do you?
We are, we do, from an emergency management standpoint, share several emails amongst CAOs, I've been in contact fairly regularly, so it's something that I can bring out to, to see if.
I'm just curious, I was just curious if there was.
To be completely honest, we're, we're right up there on the list next after Lowman for hosting a meeting, so we could offer to host.
You know, and again, to, not knocking, the, the nice thing sometimes about having meals, it does sometimes entice the odd person that, you know, just running out of work and, you know, doesn't want to miss their supper, you know? Some of us could have enough health issues that we can miss a few meals and they hurt us. So, but other ones, you know, it's, it's a way that they feel comfortable at going to, so.
I, I can mention that for sure.
I want to mention to Tracy and see if, you know, maybe ask all the administrators and see if, if somebody wants to host it differently, you know, because unfortunately, you know, Tracy's lost her larger facility and.
And it was cozy for all the counselors in that, but anyway. So yeah, I can afford it for sure.
Good, thank you, Laura. Anything else for Kim on any of those two? If not, somebody wish to move the administration to post? Lana? Any discussion on Lana's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. Okay, let's carry it in as we. Okay, moving on to German. Michelle, thank you very much. Any question on Michelle's motion? Hearing none, we will call the question. And we are officially adjourned. Okay, thank you very much, folks.
Michelle, I understand that we were ejected there all the time because I sat there for the evening conference. It's freezing there.